2020 Planning Board Meeting, virtual Planning Board Meeting to order. And Paul, you're on to read the whole long thing.
According to this order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law relating to the 2020 coronavirus outbreak emergency, September 22nd, 2020 public meeting for the Falmouth Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Return of public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. One, meeting will be televised via Falmouth Community Television. Two, real time public comment can be addressed to the Planning Board utilizing Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or questions to the Chair via the chat function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate points in the meeting. Login instructions. Instructions and the meeting link for the specific meeting can be found the following web address. Or please plan on 10 to 15 minutes of preparation time to log in, though it may be less if you have previously used Zoom on the device you'll use. Additionally, public comments may be sent in advance to the meeting to planning@falmouthma.gov at least five hours prior to the beginning of the meeting. Documents and audio or video files may also be submitted via email. Submitted email comments and documents we made a part of the meeting record may be read into the record, summarized, displayed during the meeting at the discretion of the Chair. Four, applicants, their representatives, and individuals with important matters before the Planning Board may be remotely and are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals with important matters before the Planning Board may contact the Planning Department to arrange an alternative means of real time participation if unable to use the Zoom virtual meeting software. Documentary exhibits and a visual presentation should be submitted to the meeting at planning@falmouthma.gov so that they may be displayed for public access viewing.
Okay, thanks, Paul. The first thing now is the minutes of September 8th, 2020. Paul?
Approval meeting minutes of September 8th, 2020 as corrected. And I should note that Michaela is continually participating in these meetings and she's not noted on the minutes, so I added that, and her name is spelled incorrectly.
Thank you, Paul. Is that the one where you were going to ask that the verbatim of the letter sent by Dr. Dave be taken out, or is that the September 8th?
Yes, that was modified as requested.
Okay, so as modified, thank you. I should have looked that up, but I didn't. Okay, so Paul has... I need a second.
Seven.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, show of hands, please. So it's six of the six of us present. Thank you, Paul. Okay, then, an approval not required plan. This is a continuation. Partition Commissioner Edward Foley Vaughan Esquire and Todd Rainey Jr., trustee of OBR Realty Trust, bought a land to create three new lots, replacing seven existing lots located at 336 Old Barnstable Road. Map number is 2806003000-006 Falmouth Engineering. And they did the corrections that we had asked, as you will have noted. They put on the name of the road and changed the lot numbers so that it matches what is normal, what is in the registry and is normal way of referring to it. And if there are no further questions, are there any further questions about this or comments? Okay, no further questions and comments. There, we have a suggested motion in front of us, so if someone would please make that motion. Charlotte. Charlotte, you've got to unmute, please. Thank you.
... who endorse the plan of land prepared by Partition Commissioner Edward Foley Vaughan Esquire and Todd Rainey Jr., trustee of OBR Realty Trust dated September 2nd, 2020, without regard to zoning or buildability, and should not be construed as an approval that the lots shown are entitled to a building permit.
Is there a second on this? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and remember, this is an A and R plan. If there are no further comments or discussions on this motion, please signify your vote. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Okay, so that is all of us present. Paul, you raised your hand, yes, no? Yes, okay. So there are six of us present and six of us voting in favor of it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. We have a Planning Board decision. Woods Hole Partners LLC definitive plan application to create a four lot subdivision with 445 linear foot roadway located at 533-539 Woods Hole Road, Massachusetts. And Jim, you're recusing, yes?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I should have... Thanks for reminding me.
Okay. So we have a decision on this. Does anybody have any further comments, or should we do the decision, read the decision, and then we can have further comments? Okay, well, I go for the decision. Who would like to do that? Bob, would you?
I'll read it.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion that the Planning Board vote to approve the application of Woods Hole Partners LLC under Article 4, Definitive Plans, Chapter 305, Subdivision Regulations of the Town of Falmouth for a plan entitled 533 to 539 Woods Hole Road, Falmouth, Massachusetts, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, dated February 27th, 2020, with revisions dated date of June 8th, 2020, scale of 1 inch equals 40 feet, together with a topographical plan entitled Topographical Plan Prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, dated March 4th, 2020, with revision date of June 8th, 2020, scale of 1 inch equals 30 feet, along with a profile plan and cross section entitled Plan and Profile Definitive Plan, being a subdivision of Lot B2, Plan Book 107, page 129, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, dated March 4th, 2020, with revision date of June 8th, 2020, scale as noted, along with drainage calculations, erosion, and sedimentation, in letter to the Planning Board with the following findings and conditions. Findings. The applicant is applying to the Planning Board for a four lot definitive subdivision in accordance with Article 4, Section 305... Yeah, Section 305-11-Definitive Plan. The address is 533-539 Woods Hole Road. It is a 5.4 plus acre developed mixed use property. The property has an abandoned hotel and restaurant with associated site improvements such as driveways, parking areas, and a tennis court. The property is in the VR zoning district. The applicant's intent in filing a subdivision plan is to effect a zoning freeze as per GL Chapter 40A, Section 6, 5th Paragraph, the applicant's plan shown for lots and a 445 linear foot roadway with a cul-de-sac. Three of the lots would get frontage from the new road, and one would have frontage from Woods Hole Road. Waivers, Section 305-24 Streets A6, the intersection of center lines of streets with another street shall occur not less than 300 feet apart. Required distance is 300 feet, and the actual distance is plus 200 feet. Section 305-24B5 Street Lines at intersections shall be rounded with a radius of not less than 25 feet in residential subdivisions and not less than 35 feet in industrial and commercial subdivisions. Section 305-24StreetB8, the street layout at the entrance to a subdivision of butts property not owned by the subdivided, the width of the layout shall be 60 feet for the first 200 feet from the intersecting road. The entrance road shall be located within the layout so that the extra 16 feet of width will be used to provide additional buffering from the road for the abutting property owner. Section 305-24C Street Cross Section, the grading of the shoulders and slopes and the location of the pavement, utilities and drainage structures shall conform to the typical section shown on the drainage file as part of the definitive plan. Section 305-24F3 Storm Drainage Facilities shall be designed to accommodate the runoff from the entire watershed area, whether it's inside or outside the subdivision, under conditions of total potential development permitted under Chapter 240 zoning. Section 305-30 Sidewalks, Grass Blots, and Street Trees shall be required in every subdivision. See Standard Cross Section Schedules A and B. Section 305-35G, where the grade of the road is above or below the adjacent land, the side slopes shall be no steeper than 2 to 1 in cuts and 3 to 1 in fills. The slopes shall be graded with a 4 inch depth of loam and seeded with an approved mixture. Section 305-37 Sidewalks, Section 305-40 Trees. Conditions, one, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the Planning Board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to Section... pursuant to 240183B of the zoning bylaw. No permit for occupancy of new construction utilizing any of the three proposed lots having frontage on the new road shall be issued until the Planning Board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval have been met. Two, the applicant must meet the soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions and submit an erosion and sediment control plan as described in this document to Falmouth Engineering for review and approval prior to start of construction. Three, the applicant will obtain an approved street opening permit from engineering prior to the start of any construction utilizing a lot having frontage on the new road. Four, the applicant will have a pre-construction meeting between the applicant, contractor, and any town representative necessary for construction of the new road. Five, the Planning Board may designate an outside consultant for the construction inspections and bond or covenant release as allowed under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53G. Six, to secure construction of the road and installation of municipal services as shown on the plan, if the plan is recorded, a suitable covenant or bond shall be delivered to the Board per General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81U, 7th Paragraph, but any such covenant or bond shall not apply to Law 2, which has frontage only on Woods Hole Road, and shall not apply to redevelopment of the 5.4 acre parcel as a single lot with frontage only on Woods Hole Road without the recording of the subdivision plan.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this? Because as you will remember, this is to freeze the zoning for a period of at least eight years. So is there any further discussion on this before we take a vote?
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, Tom.
I just wanted to point out the condition number five is that condition that the engineering department wants us to have, and the Planning Board to date has not requested it in any of their decisions. I have it in red, I have it highlighted, I didn't want it to slip by the Board to let you know it's in there, but the Board previously has had... really hasn't proved that as a condition. I just didn't want it to get by.
And I would like to point out, Tom has pointed out that he could have stated it, the Planning Board will, but he said the Planning Board may. So it's the Planning Board's choice as to whether an outside consultant will be hired.
I'd rather not have it approved.
Hi, John.
Hi.
You would rather not what?
I would rather number five be taken out of the decision. I don't agree with it.
Okay, then you would have to make a motion to that effect.
I make a motion that we take number five out of the conditions.
Is there a second to John's motion?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on John's motion? Charlotte?
John, could you please explain your thinking?
We haven't approved this. We've had quite a few discussions about it. We haven't approved it for any other applicant. And it has unlimited expenses, cost to the applicant, unknown costs and expenses to the applicant. The Town of Falmouth has a wonderful engineering department, and they're quite capable of overseeing this development.
Okay, we have an amendment. Yes, Charlotte?
I'd just like to comment on that. I initially objected to this when we were trying to decide if we wanted it among the general conditions. And my objection dealt with if the work was being taken from the Planning Department, was there some plan for either diminishing the Planning Department or adding extra work to them, or what would the workload impact be on the Planning Department? And so it was put off. But I've heard since then that we are holdouts within the town on this. The zoning board of appeals has approved it, I believe. Is that correct, Tom?
That's correct, yes.
And other towns around us have approved it. So I... Normally, I agree with John, but I think I'm ready to go along with it. I don't know that this is the right way to do it, to approve it first as part of a condition, rather than taking it in as a general condition first.
Bob?
How much weight does the word "may" have in this? I mean, we could require, or we may not require it.
Well, if I may, not to kind of crack on "may," but we might. However, in this case, a couple of things going on. This is a subdivision approval to freeze zoning, so we don't actually expect any inspections because we don't expect them to build this. Secondly, regarding the whole 53 and our subdivision regulations, we need to get back to the inspection protocol we talked about previously. So when we get into October, we're going to kind of go back and look at our whole inspection protocol and bring this whole thing back up with a discussion with the Board, with the new DPW Director Peter McConerty in house to kind of talk about his side of things and how it affects his department. Because from my side, from the Planning Board's side, the thing that affects us is the applicant asks for inspections, and those inspections are approved through the Planning Office. So when someone wants to get something inspected, they request an inspection through us. We notify engineering that it's fine to go out and do those inspections. So the only role for us is authorizing inspections after requested by the applicant. Most of that work comes through the engineering division.
Any further discussion on this, Charlotte?
Question, if this is going to freeze this for eight years, if we don't include it now, and we do include this in our general provisions soon, would this then be covered?
It's not zoning. It's a regulation, our subdivision regulations, so it wouldn't be frozen because it's not zoning.
So therefore, if we don't include it now, it won't be... it won't apply to this piece of land, is that right?
It won't apply to this subdivision that we never expect to be built.
Okay, got that.
John? John?
We've had this discussion multiple times, and someone in the Planning Department keeps putting this in every decision and hoping that someday somebody will approve it. And I know it's in red, I know it's obvious, but if we're going to take this route, we should have this discussion later, which you just talked about, then why don't we just eliminate the inspections by the Building Department and have an engineer do those inspections? Why don't we just eliminate all of that? And I don't really care that what other towns have done or not done. We hear all the time how expensive it is and how difficult it is to develop property in the Town of Falmouth. And this is an unlimited expense, the way it's written. And I'm not going to support it.
Tom, you wanted to say something more, I thought?
No, only that when the folks in engineering recommend conditions to them, we include them. And I always note, as John pointed out, that this is in there, and I don't want it to slip by anybody. It's sort of disingenuous to the folks who we count on for engineering to say, "We recommend this condition," and just sort of say to engineering, "Well, never mind." So like I said, in October, had a couple of conversations with Peter McConerty about renewing our subdivision regulations, re-advertising those in the inspection protocol. So sometime in October, we'll have Peter McConerty in, we'll have a hearing, and we'll finalize the changes to our subdivision, including the inspection protocol, and this will likely be in there as well. So you'll likely see it a couple more times until we get to October and we have our next hearing about the inspection protocol.
Jim?
I suggest our last 10 minutes has been out of order. We're talking about corporate policy, not about the application. And I had to recuse myself for the specifics of Woods Hole, but I don't recuse myself for the opposition of this, and I think it was done strategically to keep me off the Board. This comes up every single meeting, and it's not fair. We voted it down as a Board, and this is not about Woods Hole. This is about Tom Bott and the engineering, and we voted it down as a Board. I'm done.
We have an amendment to the original article, Pam?
I was going to say, if this was not what it is, which is merely to hold in place for eight years, this zoning, if it was something different and much more significant, I wouldn't support it. But I have no issue with not supporting this particular condition because I don't think it's ever going to become an issue, not on this subdivision.
Charlotte?
I think it might be better to wait till we have a full discussion and we can be more of one mind on the Board, or at least have fully expressed ourselves.
Okay. We have an amendment in front of us. Yes, Paul? Paul, I can't hear you.
I understand and appreciate John's comment. He has opposed this all along. However, most of the town departments are using this process. We're redoing this when Director Public Works come in play. In this particular case, it certainly doesn't apply because you're never going to build it. The stage is not in place at this time. I agree, it's not appropriate to have it in this particular decision. But I think we should revisit this sometime next month, whenever, and prove this properly with the Director Public Works.
Okay. So we have an amendment to the original motion. On the floor, it's been moved and seconded. Everybody in favor, please show by raising your hand. Okay. No, it's... Yeah, okay, I'm getting this wrong. It's in favor of not having it in...
Not removing it.
Removing.
Removing.
Condition five.
Everybody in favor of removing condition five from the motion?
Yeah.
Show your hand. All right. So there are six of us voting on it, and it's six in favor of John's motion to remove it. Now we go back to the original motion with number five removed. Are there any further discussions of that before we vote on it? Okay, again, show your hands. Everybody in favor of this motion. Six out of the six. Thank you. And Jim, you can get back on. We have next is a Planning Board discussion. The applicant is Theophilus Moniz III, Site Plan Review Application, to construct an attached accessory apartment located at 93 Old Main Road, and Michaela is going to speak to this.
Hi. I am going to be showing the screen share as well, so just give me a moment, and I will bring that up for you. All right, so we have an accessory dwelling unit that currently does exist as an in-law apartment. The applicant is coming before the Board to try and have it permitted for an accessory dwelling unit. It is attached, it is located above the garage. There are some pictures to do a better representation of showing it. This is the apartment located here in the back of the garage. And just to go over some of the square footages, because I know that's a common question, the accessory dwelling unit is below the allowed 40%, and it is below the 800 square foot that is allowed as well. So at that point, I will turn it over to the applicant to... or, excuse me, I turn it over to the chairperson. Sorry, taking your job.
That's okay. The applicant is here, and he wishes, I assume, to speak to this plan.
Well, I'm prepared to answer any questions that might be raised in this matter.
Does anybody have any questions in regard to this accessory dwelling request? Bob?
What's the difference now? What's going to be added to make it an accessory apartment as opposed to an in-law?
At the present time, the Building Department has requested...
We're renting it.
We are renting it now, but the only change that would be required by the Building Department is to put a second egress in, even though there is one now going through the main house.
Okay.
And that's drawn up on the drawings that we submitted to the Planning Board.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions of Moniz?
Pat?
Yes?
I'd like to say that the application is in very good order. It follows all of the requirements for accessory apartments and so forth. My question was about the second exit, and I'm glad to hear that you've got a plan for one, but I'm wondering, where is it? Just if you could just point out where on the plan that we have, where would that second exit be? Through the bathtub, I mean.
Well...
It goes out through the bathroom out the back. We don't have it yet. We're waiting, we're going to build it.
Yeah.
If you go to that drawing that was just... you just went by?
Yeah.
Go to page one. Right here, if you see on the very right-hand lower corner, you see a set of stairs going down. That is the entrance to the accessory apartment. We plan on going just to the left of that, making a new door and a stairway coming directly straight down to the ground level.
Another stairway.
Another stairway.
I have a question about is it... I've had this question the whole time. Is this absolutely necessary? I mean, we have it right now, we have that entrance. We also have a door that goes through our main house for secondary. And I don't know, just it's going to... it's been priced at $35,000 to have it done. I mean, I don't see why it's even necessary, but... Bob? You know, I don't know if that's your job or if that's a different committee. Bob?
That's up to the building inspector. Our only interest is in if it changes the outside appearance of the building and if it changes the size of the footprint and things like that. And if it's in the back, we really don't have any say in where the second exit is located, how people are... how, uh, people are exiting the building. That's up to the building department. That's a code issue and we don't deal with, uh, the building code.
Right, okay, that's fine, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions of the Monies? Anybody? Okay, um, does everybody find this satisfactory?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so then we need to instruct our planning staff to write a positive, uh, decision on this. And that will be available October 13th, I believe, Tom?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so may I have a vote, please? I need a motion that, Jim?
I move, we make a positive motion for approval of this, uh, accessory apartment.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we instruct the planning staff to create a positive motion for this accessory apartment. All in favor? Show your hands, thank you.
Great, thank you.
So that will be available, we'll vote that on October 13th.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a public hearing, applicant Cove Cottage LLC and 108 Seapit Road LLC, special permit application to adjust boundaries of existing development lots to create conforming frontage and septic system location outside of wetlands buffer. A portion of the new lot being only 40 feet wide, located at 108 Seapit Road. Uh, map number 3221004, 023, and 3221005, 026, Holmes and McGrath. And you got quite a bit of information in your packet. Tom has, um, requested, um, a number of people to give input. Frank Duffy and, um, Rod and Scott, I believe, all gave input on this plan. Paul, you've got to unmute, Paul. Still can't hear you at all, Paul.
Public hearing notice for this project was published on 8/21 and 8/28/20. Twenty-eight of letters were notified by, uh, received certified mail.
Okay, thank you, Paul. And I have asked Tom to please tell us about what he has discovered in talking with all these other people, even though it's in our packet and I could repeat it, there's nothing like firsthand. So Tom, if you would, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Bob, Amit and I discussed this earlier today. Uh, and, uh, Bob and I have a, a standing agreement to agree to disagree, uh, as agreeable as we can. Uh, so at least on my side, I know. Uh, so, uh, the, the discussion was about, to what extent can the planning board, uh, issue a special permit to reduce the minimum lot width? Town council's opinion, the building commissioner's opinion was all that it wasn't an 80% reduction from this 50-foot dimension, the corners. It was a reduction of the 80% of the minimum lot width for the district, which is 100 feet. That said, the minimum lot width would be 80 feet, uh, that the board could grant. And here, this is shows a 40-foot, uh, minimum lot width. Uh, the bylaw states that no part of any lot may be less wide than 50 feet in any dimension except at the corners. And in this case, uh, the lot would actually be as proposed, less than 50 feet wide in this stretch at 40 feet. It was the opinion of town council, uh, the town, the building commissioner, that, uh, 80 feet is the maximum. And council did receive a copy of the 2006 decision by the board, uh, that, uh, Bob and I discussed earlier today. And town council, uh, said that the planning board is under no obligation to follow any previous decision as any sort of precedent. Uh, and so while the board may have voted something in 2006, the board's not helped with that at this point. Further in discussing with Scott McGinn, because I know the board had some questions about the septic field. Could the septic field be jointly between multiple properties as a condominium association? Wouldn't necessarily be nitrogen reducing, uh, under a special requirement of the planning board. It could, but Scott McGinn says that there actually is the ability to locate the septic field on the property. Uh, I'm gonna, um, bring up a, a screen here for just a quick second. With a bit of, uh, zoom into the area. So here you see on the screen, uh, a detail of the plan. Scott says that the plant, the, the Board of Health has on a fairly regular occurrence issued waivers for a septic field that could be located in this area on the existing property. Uh, with a minimal setback from the property lines, minimal setback from the structure itself. And that, in fact, in some places in the heights, it had the septic field wrapping around parts of the building. So the cesspool could be replaced with a Title V system, could be on the site with a variance from, uh, the Board of Appeals. I mean, from the, uh, Board of Health. Thank you.
Okay. Are there questions or comments from the board? Just a minute, Bob. Does, does anybody on the board have any questions or comments on this? Yes, Paul?
Mr. Amen has done some very, very creative approaches to this property on behalf of his client. I'd like to see something happen here, but I think the, the minimum lot width is something we, we've got to adhere to. But there are ways that they can adjust the property there and I think he can come up with some more creative solutions to have this thing approved on behalf of his clients.
Okay, Bob, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, thanks, uh, Pat and thanks, board members. And, uh, I'd like to thank Tom for his, uh, call earlier today. Um, I assume that all of you saw in your package, the correspondence that I sent on September 10 that discussed the previous decision of the board on this, uh, very issue. So I first want to mention with regard to the Board of Health that, um, yes, you could put in a new septic system on, uh, the lot, but that septic system will still be non-conforming as to its location to, uh, wetlands. And the standard in such a case with the existing lot lines isn't, uh, Title V standards. The standard is maximum feasible compliance. So when you have an existing lot, uh, with existing house and you're trying to replace the system, you don't have to meet Title V requirements, you just have to do the best you can. And the point here is that the best you can is not as good as we'd be able to do. If we could locate the system entirely outside Conservation Commission jurisdiction and not need a variance from a hundred-foot setback requirement, uh, from wetlands that's in the, uh, Falmouth bylaw. Now, lot width is defined as, uh, the, being able to place a circle somewhere in the lot, anywhere within the lot. And in this zoning district, lot width means you have to be able to locate a circle 100 feet wide. And that can be reduced to 80 feet, but lot width is defined for this zoning district as 100 feet. And this lot meets that. We meet the 100-foot, um, circle requirement. We meet minimum width requirement for that part of the definition. There's actually two parts to the minimum, uh, width requirement. One is you have to be able to, uh, place a circle of a certain size somewhere on the lot. But there's a second part and that's the part that's in 24067B, which says that at no point can the width be less than 50 feet, except at corners. So that's a lot width requirement as well. And if you look at 24067B, where it sets forth that requirement, it specifically states that that is an amendment to lot width. So to meet lot width, under our bylaw, you need to be able to have, in this case, a 100-foot circle somewhere on the lot, which we have. And you also cannot have any location on the lot, other than at corners, where you can't put 50-foot circle. But the bylaw goes on to say that the planning board can create lots with less than required lot width, as long as that you don't reduce it more than 20%.
Brilliant.
Nothing in the bylaw says that that does not apply to both parts of the lot width requirements. A hundred feet and the 50 feet. We meet the 100 feet standard. We're asking that there be this adjustment by special permit to the 50-foot requirement. And the planning board has done this before and agreed that this is allowable. And I sent you the decision, signed by Pat Kerfoot as chairman, obviously approved by the town council's office in 2006, because that was a case, that Quinlin case, that actually went to court and was remanded to the planning board, which then voted to, uh, grant the special permit to have a section of the lot be only 40 feet wide, very similar and exactly, for that matter, to this case, although the benefits in this case, I think, are greater. So the fact that the planning board has done this before should at least make you think, well, can we do this? Why can't we do this? Do we have our option to do it? Do we have discretion to interpret the bylaw the way the board thoughtfully decided the same case with the same language in the bylaw in 2006? When you grant a special permit, you're making a determination that the plan is better, that the benefits of the plan exceed the adverse impacts of, of the plan. You give yourselves the opportunity to approve a better plan. I'm not saying you have to come to that conclusion, although I think that the board was ready to do so at the last meeting. You could see the benefits of this. There are no adverse impacts. We have a strange lot with 14 feet of sort of frontage that we're going to give 100 feet of frontage, including some additional frontage, actually on the town road on Seapit. And we're going to create a location for a septic system outside of Conservation Commission jurisdiction. There are only benefits, there's nothing adverse at all to the neighborhood or the town about this plan. Why would you ever make the choice of not being able to approve a better plan? When you can interpret the bylaw to allow this special permit, when it's been done that way in the past by, you know, by the same board? Uh, and the facts were the same, um, as far as what the law was at the time. I don't think you have to make a decision that is such a narrow interpretation of the bylaw. You have the opportunity to do something better and I encourage you to do so. It's always tough for a lawyer to argue against a position that is taken by the town planner, the town council, although that's not what was decided in 2006, and the building commissioner. It's, it's tough. And it's tough for you to make a decision that's contrary to that advice you're receiving, but you can. Nobody could appeal, you could be overturned. That's not going to happen in this case. Nobody is against this proposal. It's only beneficial. But I just think it's a mistake for you to decide you can't do something when you can do it and you'll be deciding that it's a better result. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. The Quinlin case, I know my signature was on it. It was remanded back to the planning board by the court. What does that tell you? I believe we didn't want to fight it. Whether we agreed or didn't agree with court, I believe we didn't want to fight it.
Well, actually, Pat, that, the, the issue in that case was not whether you could grant a special permit to reduce the 50-foot width. That was never the issue in that case. Everybody assumed you could do that. It was never the issue. The issue was that a minority of the board, we didn't, we didn't get the special permit. We got, I believe it was a four to two vote. I may be off on that, but it was a majority in favor, but not enough to grant the special permit in the first place. Questioned whether the, one of the two lots which was to be adjusted was a buildable lot. And after the board by a vote that was more in favor than opposed, but nonetheless denied the special permit, we went to work with the Conservation Commission and the Building Commissioner and showed that that lot was buildable, that we had two buildable lots, that all we were doing was adjusting the lot line to create a better building location, uh, for, um, the vacant lot. And, and we did so by reducing the width of the already developed lot to 40 feet.
Thank you for that clarification.
Once we showed that, the board was willing to then take it back and grant it. The issue was never whether the, uh, board could grant the, um, reduction in width of the 50-foot area, it never came up.
Thank you for that clarification, Bob. Okay, so we have this issue in front of us. Town council has said no, the building commissioner has said, no, we can't reduce it. Bob?
If you look at the, uh, the northwest corner of, uh, Lot 23, I mean, if, if we had, if that was 50 feet, this wouldn't be an issue, correct? Am I correct in that? If it was fif, that line there was 50 feet?
Uh, yes, that's cur, I, I, I don't have the, well, I do have the plan here, so let me look at it.
Bring it up, give me a sec.
Right.
The arrow of Reed Path.
This strip, yeah, they'll strip along. If it was 50 feet, then there'd be no problem.
Yeah.
But the existing septic system for the adjacent lot and the location of the existing house on the adjacent property prevents us from having a 50-foot, um, width. We can't do it if it's 50 feet, even doing it 40 feet. As you can see, we're only 2.8 feet from the existing house on the adjacent lot.
Right.
A lot better than the present situation, as we discussed previously.
Well, what I'm looking at is Reed Path, why that couldn't be just extended? If, uh, if you took that, uh, line that forms the lower part of that arrow, couldn't that be extended to that, to that lot line there and then the, uh, the north, the, the upper part of that extended as well? What, what prevents that from happening? Cause that, you could get your 50 feet that way.
Sorry, Bob, but I don't, I, I haven't followed what you're saying. You're talking about extending Reed Path. The only way to extend Reed Path would be to, toward the water? I don't know how that gets you a wider portion of the proposed Lot 218.
Well, that, that line that says, uh, 41, uh, 00 East.
Hold on while I find that. Yes, okay, that line.
Okay, is, is that, that's 14 feet? No, that's, that's 40 feet, right?
That's 14.41 feet.
Okay, 14, okay. I can hardly see it on here. Okay, uh, so you couldn't extend that? So it goes to that dotted line?
Well, if we extended the property line there, we'd be cutting off the area we want to put the septic system in. We, and we wouldn't be getting 100 feet of frontage for Lot 218. I mean, I think the benefits of what we've done are clear.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. I'm, I was just looking at some way of maybe getting, uh, 50-foot.
I mean, I have some other ideas that maybe we're going to be able to do, but they all come with problems. And this, we felt and still feel that the planning board can grant this special permit, that there's no disadvantage whatsoever, no adverse effects at all. And the only thing keeping you from doing it is interpreting the bylaw in a very narrow way, that's different than has been interpreted before, in which I think that the interpretation- In a very narrow way that's different than has been interpreted before, in which I think that the interpretation that. We we urge you to take. Is a very good interpretation. We're not stretching it. Lot width, the minimum lot width is fifty feet over here. And you have the authority to adjust the lot, to grant a special permit, to reduce that by. Twenty percent, we think.
And I've said before that people worry about precedent. It's a special permit, so.
Yes, every time you would grant this special permit, you'd have to make the determination that it's better because you're doing it.
Right.
More benefits than disadvantages by doing it. Why would you restrict yourself from do from the ability to do it? Why wouldn't you interpret the bylaw in ways that gives? You. More authority to do the right thing. Yes, I agree that if it's clearly not allowed in the bylaw. The by the planning board can't do what's clearly not allowed. This is not. Clearly not allowed. And the fact that the board did it. Previously. Is a good indication of that, that at best. It's not clear whether you can do it or not, but it's been done. It makes sense and it's a better result. I don't know what discussions were had with the building commissioner and the town council and whether had I talked to them directly, I might have convinced them or. How they interpreted or misinterpreted the decisions. I'm talking to you. And it's your decision. To grant a special permit or not. The board in two thousand and six did it. They did the right thing and you're doing in this case, I think would be the right thing.
Charlotte.
I'd like to ask Bob a mental question. You're arguing that this is the best solution in a difficult situation. But I don't see why the solution you have proposed is better than the solution that. The town planner, the building department. Figured out that you can have. Us an adequate septic system by moving it either where the. Approximate location of the cesspool is. Or between the two houses that there's room there to do this without having to break the the fifty-foot rule.
Well, Charlotte, we can't. We 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 can't. We can't. Get the septic system on the present lot. In the location that's being suggested, because the present lot has that dash line you can see. And I don't think there's room to put a new septic system on that side without variances. And yes, we could get variances. To upgrade the system as best we can. Maximum feasible compliance would be the status that applies. But. The location. Is the better location.
I still don't understand why it's better.
Neither neither do I.
We're putting a septic system, including the leaching. Farther away from sensitive wetlands.
You're putting it further away?
Yes.
Yeah, we're getting it completely outside of conservation jurisdiction. Completely out of the area where we would need any variances from from both the state and the. Local regulations. And furthermore, we're. We're creating a lot that has real frontage instead of the present lot. So there are benefits. Then what are the disadvantages? If we're entitled to a special permit, that is, if you interpret the bylaws saying you could grant a special permit. Special permits then are allowed under the bylaw upon your determination. That there are not adverse effects that. Overbalance. The beneficial effects. I don't think anybody can identify any adverse effects. From what we're proposing.
Jim.
I would agree. There's no adverse effects to the neighborhood. The buildings are already there. I think there's a way they could do it by doing. Make them into condominiums, but that way from the value makes it hard to sell. I think what they've come up with with moving the septic system. Is far away from the resources they can. And as long as as a board, we think we have the right to do it because we've done in the past. I I think this is an elegant solution. They and it works well for everybody. The properties are already there. I mean, in a world, this is, we're not. And if there's a precedent for making these kinds of exceptions, then we should we should do it. Because this, these are, these buildings have been here for a long time. And I think the the best thing we could do is get the septic system, not with the variance, but as far away from the resources we can. Keep the structures where they are or relatively where they are, and we're improving the neighborhood a lot. Period.
Certainly improving the groundwater.
All right.
I agree with Jim. I mean. This is one of those situations that it's it's a tough nut to crack. You need a creative solution. I think they've come up with one. And like I keep going back to, it's a special permit, so if people can. If someone else wants to do this, then it's that's an individual case. Every special permit is an individual case. And. Someone may want to use this as a precedent-setting thing, but if the evidence doesn't back it up. In a future case, then it doesn't back it up. So I I think we're fine and, you know, having gone through the information from Brian Curry. I I think this is, this should be done.
John.
My question, I I agree that's really a good idea. All right, I read what we received from town council. Was town council asked the question regarding? Permitting this through a special permit, Tom? Did you have any comment on that?
Yes, sir. We we sent the whole file. We had the discussion about. The special permit, the bylaw, but council's opinion was. What the board is able to grant. Is an eighty percent reduction from the minimum lot width, and that minimum lot width is one hundred feet. Not fifty feet at the corner. One hundred feet throughout the district, and that's what town council said. That's what Rod Palmer said. It's not eighty percent from the fifty feet. It's eighty percent from the one hundred feet width.
Okay, thank you.
Charlotte.
Would it be fair to say that we're being asked to balance the cleanliness of the water in that area against a paper rule?
I think she's asking me that question, Tom. Charlotte, you're asking Tom that question, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, the board has the ability to make that and they had the ability to make those conditions. And one of the things we talked about before. Was someone asked, well, would that be a nitrogen-reducing septic system? So if you wanted to really go all in for approving a septic system that's going to improve the water quality. Then you could make a nitrogen-reducing septic system there that would improve the water quality even more so. In the absence of that, we're, you know. A hundred feet or so difference from the two septic systems. The ability to put the septic system on one oh eight, not to have any special permit, not to have anything other than going to the. Board of Health for a variance from something they typically give. Is what Scott McGinn seemed to think was the most logical thing to do there.
This board has often given a great deal of weight to the conservation concerns and the environmental concerns. Even trying to balance the conservation concerns against affordable housing, another very high value that we have. Certainly higher than ten feet on a rule. And yet we went with the conservation.
Tom, I have a question that I probably should know the answer to, but I don't. Bob has argued that we have every right to do the reductions that he says, that. We can do this within our framework. Town council and Rod Palmer, the building commissioner, said, no, this is what it is. My question is, under a special permit. Can the board? Reduce it? Even though the bylaw says this is the law? Does a special permit override?
No, the board can take whatever action they want, and if no one appeals it, then it's permissible. There's no cop who's going to give you a ticket. It's about, you know, what the bylaw says, what the professionals in the building have to say. And then it's up to the board to interpret that. But if the board approves a special permit for this. And no one appeals it, that's a special permit. Same has happened in two thousand and six.
Okay, everybody else has been weighing in on this, so I am going to weigh in on it too. With Tom's explanation right now. And with great respect for the advice that he has sought. I think my original opinion stands that this has been an elegant, as Jim puts it, an elegant solution to a pretty knotty problem. And. I believe that we could and should require a denitrifying system on this site as a result of giving a permanent. A permit, special permit. Because that's one of the reasons that. We would be doing this is to help clean up the water. And I I think it solves. A lot of problems and is elegantly done. So that's my opinion. Pam.
I agree with you. I mean, is it ideal? No, but there doesn't seem to me to be any ideal. Solution here. And these people have owned the house for a long time, houses. And. I think this is. An okay solution. And I agree with the denitrification system.
Okay, Jim.
I'm all set. I agree.
All right, then do you want to instruct? Our our professional staff to put together a decision on this special permit? And that hopefully would be available on our next meeting, October fifteenth. Jim?
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments on this? Okay, may I have a show of hands, please, on? This motion to instruct the staff to put together a motion for the eighteenth. Okay. And. All right, so it's all of us then. And oh, by the way, I think there should be made mention too, because I also feel strongly that this should not be held as. Held up as an example of, well, see, the board did it in these two instances, so hey, therefore do it every time.
Pat, it's going to happen anyway.
Yeah, I know it will.
Because of what we do, no matter what you say. Yeah, I mean, once we pass this, it's it is opening the box a bit and.
But it's only every fourteen years.
All right, well, I'll be gone by now, Bob. You may be around, but I'll be gone.
I'll pass for here twice.
I mean, gone.
The way I look at it, we're just waiving one requirement. We just waived nine in another decision.
Exactly, exactly.
Right.
But this is nothing.
Yeah.
I do think we ought to thank Tom and the building commissioner and Frank and Michaela for all the work they put in. And what has been a tutorial for us on this fine point in the rules.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
And and just as an inside baseball sort of stat, the last decision, you waived nine. Regulations of the subdivision regulations. And if there's a compelling public purpose, the board may waive. Subdivision regulations. It's different from zoning.
Yeah.
But there's compelling evidence that this is a benefit.
Yeah, I think so. So, all right, so we will see a decision on the special permit then that we can. Discuss a little bit more and vote on on October thirteenth.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. We have coming up now, planning board discussion, and Tom wants to recap what happened at town meeting in regard to. Our support of different issues. So, Tom, you've got the floor.
Well, thank you. Well, as you know, everything went on the blanket. We approved the zoning change that E D F C had requested. The zoning change for the property that the former senior center is on, so it's now eligible to be used by the veterans. Particular that I wanted to sort of have a discussion with the board about or just touch base with the board about. Was Article thirty-seven, and I'm going to just share my screen for a second if I may. So Article thirty-seven. Was to see if the town will vote to adopt the following resolution. Be it resolved that the town of Falmouth recognizes that the climate emergency. Driven by human activity, including energy consumption and land use practices, and leading to global warming. Rising seas, deadly storms, dangerous heat waves, acidifying oceans. And melting ice sheets poses a threat to the health, safety, and economic security of the residents of the town, period. Town of Falmouth therefore adopts. It as its policy. The objective of reducing net greenhouse gas emissions from human activity within. And by the town to zero at the earliest technical, technically and economically feasible time. And request the board of selectmen to direct all officers and departments of the town to take such measures within the scope of their respective responsibilities. And authorities as may be necessary and prudent. To facilitate such policies and objections. So with that vote, at after town meeting, I had the discussion with staff here in house. That if we are, the board of the town is is taking that tech. And the planning board supported Article thirty-seven. And when we're looking at our various bylaws and our land use policies. We should certainly sort of be cognizant and perhaps up our game as to the impact of those policies on the on the larger planet. When we look at the comment about land use practices. Those land use practices are pretty much in step with what. The town of Falmouth has been doing and the Cape Cod Commission is doing. By essentially not saying, let's jump over. All this green fields and let's put new subdivisions in places where they're natural areas and things like that, because. Opening up these areas, producing more roads, producing more snowplows and road salts and things like that for sprawling subdivisions is. Is usually what is sort of that indicated by those land use practices. Sprawling and things like that. So I think the board and the Cape Cod Commission. And the L C P are all sort of on board with that. But having had this brief discussion with the planning board prior to in town meeting, taking that article. I just kind of wanted to recognize the fact that in-house. That's what we're doing is looking at those sort of things, whether it be changes to our site plan bylaw. Or other changes, including the discussions with our multifamily housing bylaw, to get ready to look at that. So I just kind of wanted to touch base on Article thirty-seven and make sure that. You're cognizant of what Article thirty-seven was. I certainly am and will be trying to bake that into all the stuff that we're doing going forward. Not that it's much different from what we're doing before, but. I think it just sort of plants a flag that says we can do better and we'll certainly be trying to do that.
Does anybody have any comment? Yes, Jim?
Yes, I I think what Tom is verifying in this particular instance. That our local comprehensive plan about redeveloping. On our village centers. With public transportation and where the sewers are on a land that's already been developed. But I find it. Somewhat conflicting that our town is now approving forty B developments way outside this same circle. So we're getting, I'm getting a mix single here on what I. I hear, so it's a little confusing.
Tom.
Well, as you know, the deck is stacked against us under forty B. It's a state law. And appeals to forty B don't go to the superior court. They don't go to land court. They go to the Housing Appeals Committee. And Housing Appeals Committee's job is to approve affordable housing. Historically, when the town has said, oh, this will crush our school system, the H A C has said, well, you're going to need to build some more classrooms. Or this is going to overwhelm our sewer system. The H A C says, well, we're going to have to up your sewer system. So whenever we have a forty B. Our goal is to try to cut the best deal as we can, and we've been pretty aggressive in our comments to various committees or various. Comments to the Commonwealth. Particularly on a couple of the forty Bs are in front of the Z B A right now. So as our policies go, we're still going to drive that hard bargain, but in the local regulations that we're creating. We we should be cognizant of those things and unfortunately, as I explained to someone. In a town I worked before, when they said, what are you going to do about forty Bs? My opinion was, and this is no disrespect to affordable housing advocates. Is that, you know, you can't keep the devil out of town. You can just try to make him behave while he's here. So always try to drive for the best deal, the best conditions, the best mitigation you can with a forty B. Because for the most part, they're out of our hands. Unless we have ten percent of our housing stock.
Paul, you have something.
Yeah, I have a question, Tom. The comment was made that many communities on Cape Cod have already adopted this resolution. Can you interlodge on that? How many have and how many have not?
I don't know how, I want to say it was two, but I might be confusing it with the bottles, the nips. I, I'd have to go back and check the record. But I know that, that some have, but I don't know exactly how many.
The impression I had, there were quite a few. But I don't know if that's true or not.
Yeah, I had the same impression too, Paul. Jim?
Yes, I, I, I understand what Tom is saying. But he's just saying that we should forget about our local comprehensive plan and concede that the 40Bs are going to come and not fight them. And I'm not willing to do that.
I don't think I said that.
Oh, you basically, I, I held my hand quietly while you talked. And you basically said that this is what the 40B has to do. And, but I still think our local comprehensive is a well thought out plan. And, and building these things where there's no public transportation, especially when you take a look at the cost of a car, it just doesn't make sense. And I think, I think the housing demand and the housing people have so much energy that they're overriding common sense a little bit on where these things should be. And I think our zoning board, I've listened to meetings, talk to them, where they talk about five and a half units per acre is too dense. I mean, I just don't think our town's together on this. And we've got to get together on this. And it's our zoning board and the planning board and the selectmen that are approving these projects. And let's all start trying to do the same thing. But what you're saying right now, oh, we could put them different places without public transportation, in my mind, if you look at the cost of owning a car, it just doesn't make sense.
Jim, I do disagree with you because Tom said the 40B law overrides our zoning. But he said that we are being very strong in our objections. And I believe we are, if you read what we've sent to the ZBA recently.
The only reason why I disagree with it is because the town already made up their position and sent it on the one on Brick Hill Road before they even brought it to us. And that's the prima facie case that they don't even listen to the planning board, that the selectmen and Tom sent it in before they even presented it to us. And then we get the comment after the fact. And I think that's a total disregard to our local comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Pam?
Yeah, I just want to say, because I am one of those housing people, that there is never an ideal place for affordable housing. And the only way that we can avoid 40Bs right now, and not all 40Bs are bad. I'll preface, there are some 40Bs that are fine and provide affordable housing. But right now, we don't seem to have that will in Falmouth to accommodate affordable housing. We need 74 units in a year in order to forestall a 40B. So if we were to have 74 units built, we wouldn't have to have a 40B for a year. And then again, if we got another 74 units, we wouldn't have to have any 40Bs the following year. But we, as a town, I think as a collective, I don't want to be melodramatic with heart and soul, but you know, you have to have a will to accommodate affordable housing. People just like you and me. And they just are in need of affordable housing. And, you know, my feeling is, has always been with a 40B, that there are, the state laws say it should be within, it should be walkable. There should be public transportation. I mean, this is across the state, that's what the laws are. But sometimes you just can't accommodate that. And people need housing. So whereas I agree that, you know, we should be there approving, when appropriate, these developments, sometimes they're not going to have everything that we want or need in them.
Charlotte?
I'd like to agree with Jim, and I don't disagree with Pam. But I would like to point out that the local comprehensive plan does say where affordable housing will be most affordable and where it will be most beneficial to the town. The, the plan is not silent on that point. What is annoying Jim, I believe, and it should be annoying this whole board, is that the board of selectmen and the zoning board are not going by the local comprehensive plan. Then in fact, they were part of the approval, they were part of the development. And yet they don't refer to it when they're making their, their judgments about 40B. Tom is right. It almost won't matter what we say. The state's going to do whatever the state's going to do. It's a developer's rule. But at least the town could be unified in its approach to where affordable housing will be best. And both the, the town housing plan that was just done a year and a half ago and the local comprehensive plan are saying, what we need is rental housing. We don't need single family affordable housing. We have
Exactly.
Of that. We don't need those anymore. We don't need to support them. We don't need to support 40Bs that are going to give us more of those. We need to support rental housing. We need to support it on a sewer. We need to support it on public transportation. That's what we should, all three boards that are really involved in handing an opinion to this state, it would be great if we could all be together on it. That's Jim's point, and I agree with it.
And I do too. Okay. Yes, Tom?
Yeah, the best defense is a good offense. Build as many affordable units as you can, as often as you can, as densely as you can in the areas we'd like to see them. So every opportunity we get, we should be pursuing that.
That is a great segue to our next
Okay, we've beaten this one a little bit to death here. The next on our agenda is the multifamily bylaw committee report. And I will remind the board that on the 29th, our meeting is devoted to the multifamily bylaw. And I believe, John, you wanted to prove that, present something? Uh, John, you're muted. Thank you.
Sometimes it's a good thing to be muted.
Especially for me.
Well, we, we just had a little bit of a discussion about 40Bs and affordable housing. And the reason that 40Bs are so effective in the town of Falmouth is we have one acre zoning. We have 25% of our land taken off of opportunity to have homes built on it and set aside as open space. And these are things that the residents of town of Falmouth have voted. And it's a way of life that we all enjoy here. However, it leaves out a, a large portion of our population. And the only way we're going to solve a lot of these problems is to have a multifamily bylaw that allows, not only allows, but encourages rentals and in locations where we as a town would like to see rental units built. That would be presumably where the sewer is, on the main roads in the town of Falmouth are serviced by public transportation. And also, this bylaw that we're going to discuss has an opportunity for redevelopment, not just new development, the redevelopment has a lot of incentives. And if it gets approved by town meeting after being vetted by our board, every unit that gets built will count toward the 10%. And I think that's really a spectacular proposition. And hopefully, going through the next few months, we can come up with a really great bylaw that town meeting will approve.
John, what, what was sent through from your committee? I didn't get a chance to see until about 3:30. I don't know whether everybody saw it or not. It was sent through at about 11:00.
Okay.
So I've just briefly been able to look at it. Pam, were you able to see?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, Bob, did you see it? Paul? No, okay. It's my concern that people have not had a chance to really study it, John.
I don't expect to go in depth with it this evening. We
Right.
We're got, it's on our next agenda, so. But I just wanted to share with the public some of the concepts that we're working on here.
Thank you. Uh, Jim?
I would, I just want to say that I've been working with John and, and Charlotte. And I think this is totally consistent with what we're trying to do in the Davis Straits Plan, but really just takes out of, out of the formula, the more complicated form-based code things and talk about what we really need in the, in the B2 and very business zones, more housing. And it's, I just think it's a magic, we, we need the density. It's got to go someplace. And the, the pure logic of building it on public transportation and on the sewer really just has to be hammered home. And that's what this bylaw does. It takes all the other things of future planning that I've been trying to talk about and just saying, okay, this is what we need and here's where we need it. Plain and simple, it's great.
Well, you were one of the authors of it too, Jim. So I would expect you to say it's great, but I
Well, he's modified, they've, they've pared it down and gone right for the meat.
Okay. Jim, John, please continue. And take yourself off mute.
What does, what we're trying to accomplish with, with this bylaw is to have a homegrown 40B. So that if approved, every, every location that gets approved, 25% of the units will be for people earning 80% of their median income or below, just like a 40B rental or homeownership is. And the other 75% will be market rate, but they will all count toward the 10% subsidized housing inventory. And I think it's, it's just a spectacular opportunity for the town to meet its obligations of 74 units per year or the 450 or 500 that the town needs to meet over time to get to the 10% to have a real defense against what a lot of people call and consider unwanted 40Bs. So this will be the town's own version of a 40B where rental housing gets built in locations that, where we want it to get built. And 100% of the units will count toward the 10%. And I, I think it's, if it gets enacted, it'll just be spectacular for the town of Falmouth.
Charlotte?
Um, could I just add that it's true that the subcommittee appointed by the planning board had only three of us on it? But in fact, the, uh, we three have been working on this a long time. And there's been input from other members of the planning board over time because it's been in front of us as an issue for so long, including you, Pam, and Pat. And from the other people in the town working on affordable housing. So it's been informed by all of that. So it's not just the thinking of, of three people. I hope that when we get to our discussion, that we don't think that that's so. I realize it has to go through a public hearing process. It may be changed as, as it goes. But it, it represents now the thinking of a lot of people who've been trying to get more affordable housing for Falmouth for a long time.
Bob?
Years ago, I, I asked for an inventory of town property that we're either not using anymore or offices or organizations that could be consolidated in other places. And, you know, I look at the former senior center where, yeah, it's going to be used for the veterans, which I think is great. But that, that to me was a piece of property that we could have put affordable housing on. We look at Scranton Ave, and you've got all those little singles, little cottages. And we need to redevelop some of our own property that we have housing on. That's a big piece of property right there. There's, there's a lot of units still on that property. And if you had a phased effect where we're eliminating some of those and, and adding larger structures or, so we have more units, I think we need to start looking at the low hanging fruit with the property that we own, as well as having a program where places like the old Ford dealership was, that was another piece of property that could have been developed had the town been able to purchase it. And I think, you know, with, John mentions that we've acquired a lot of conservation land. I think we should also be acquiring buildable property that the town can use to answer some of these and build affordable housing that we can control. And again, eliminate the need for 40Bs to come in and tell us what to do.
John?
I want to address one of, one of the item here. I'm, I'm the planning board's representative on the CPC committee. And from the CPC committee, I'm also on the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Committee. And in Falmouth, currently, we just had built, I believe, 44 units on Spring Bars Road, 100% affordable. There's 20 units of workforce housing being built on Gifford Street. 20 rental apartments, all deed restricted, are, are almost completely built on Brick Hill Road. So, and it's been, and this has all been funded, some has been, all been funded partially by the town of Falmouth to the CPC. And these three projects have probably received close to $5 million from the town of Falmouth in subsidies to create this 84 units of affordable housing. So the town has been very active, in, in my opinion, in supporting affordable housing. One of the, the things about the bylaw that we're going to discuss, hopefully we can get enacted, will not require any town funding. And yet we, we should be able to build a substantial amount of affordable units that will meet the subsidized housing inventory year after year and renovate old structures, older structures, and also build on, on lots that are unbuilt on right now. So there's going to be a lot of positives. But I just want everybody to understand that the town is building a lot of affordable, a lot of affordable housing being built. I'm sorry, being built in Falmouth. But a lot of money from the town or through the taxpayers is going to help support this affordable housing, which I think is great. But it can be built without public funds, in my opinion.
Pam, you had something you wanted to say?
Totally forgot what I was going to say.
Okay. Well, as I said, this is going to be the subject, the sole subject of our discussion on the 29th. Because there is a presidential debate starting an hour after we start, we have the option of going for no longer than an hour, or perhaps we could start a half hour earlier. What do you think, folks? Half hour earlier.
Second.
Okay, so starting it at six instead of 6:30 on the 29th?
Yes.
And that we, we would have the hour and a half that we had wanted to assign to our special third meeting of the month. Everybody in favor of that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so Tom, if it could be posted for six o'clock, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Making note here.
Yes, I just, I, I just remembered. Tom, I was going to ask you, I know that somebody from the Affordable Housing Committee was pulling together, or I think you were pulling together, a list of all the properties in town where there was either a vacant property, a, an abandoned property. But we were looking at parcels that the town owned presently. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am. Probably the second week I was here, I distributed a list of town-owned property. It's been shared a couple, in fact, I was going to bring it up and send it to the board when Bob was talking about this earlier. While it's an extensive list, a lot of the pieces of property are waver flippers of things that we got as unusable for the landlocked piece. But I'd be happy to forward that on to the board. Some of the other things that we've been looking at in-house is the Cape Cod Commission has identified the community activity centers as areas for development, which is largely the downtown area. Places that they haven't, they've identified by description, but not by mapping, are these suburban development.
but not by mapping, are these suburban development areas. And so we have been looking at mapping those as well, uh, and looking at the underlying zoning for those. So these are some of the areas in various parts of town that would be suitable for redevelopment from the Cape Cod Commission's perspective. Whether they meet all the other parameters of having this town sewer and things like that. We do wanna identify those areas, so those folks who wanna look at developing those don't have to go through the Cape Cod Commission and Development Regional Impact. So we'll have some additional areas that we looked at through the Cape Cod's description of suburban development areas, which are largely big box stores with lots of parking in front of them, uh, built in the fifties and sixties and things like that. They're suitable for redevelopment, which is in line with what the, uh,
How about, how about raw land? undeveloped land, do we have any that we own that is just sitting there?
We do.
Okay, so that would be interesting to take a look at.
Yeah, we just approved a subdivision plan to put a road onto seven acres on Locust Field, uh, which isn't on public transportation, which isn't on sewer.
Right.
Seven acres of land that we own, and if you look at seven acres of property at eight units per acre, there's fifty-six potential units. Uh, we're also looking in-house, uh, as, as the, uh, departments at the area just south of T-Ticket School, where the, uh, all-inclusive playground is at, the community gardens, the Emerald House, potential for affordable housing on those parcels as well. So there's, you're, uh, we, we got stuff that we're looking at and stuff that we're talking about and stuff that we're trying to figure out, uh, on a pretty regular basis.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, this, these comments bring something to, to mind that I think maybe the town should start investigating, see if in fact there are slivers. That, you know, we have an existing bylaw that allows for transfer development rights between subdivisions. And if you have like all these little slivers of land, you can get the right to transfer development on them. May, maybe somebody could write, if we have the town has, has all these little slivers, and maybe we should see if there's any way we could take those things and transfer them into development rights that we could build a for, a housing on, if in fact they do exist. But that, that thought process I just heard, Tom said there's lots of them, well, maybe we should, somebody should do the math on them, I know, I know in really valuable neighborhoods like Falmouth Heights, you don't have to worry about it, because the smart real estate people and lawyers are already doing it. But if we have them there, that's, that might be a way that we could get some more land that's buildable, that fits our, all our planning and comprehensive planning and everything. Cause the transfer develop, our existing bylaw, the transfer development rights does allow for it.
Okay, Bob?
That's what I was gonna bring up was TDIs. It's, it's something we started years ago, and it just kinda got lost in the shuffle with everything else. But, uh, we wanted to renew that because it, it wasn't really workable of what we actually have, and we, we needed to update it.
But we've gone off of a bit into left field on, on this based upon the introduction to the multifamily bylaw. I think it's valuable input, because it shows we're all backing this, now we've gotta make it happen. Are there any future agendas, pending applications for future agendas, Tom, that we should bring up tonight?
Uh, no, we will have, uh, on our meeting on the thirteenth, a, a new accessory housing unit. We will have our first official determination of access policy discussion. As well as the couple of decisions that we talked about tonight, and it seems like there's something else in the mix there.
Okay. Are there any announcements? Paul?
Yeah, before you say future agenda items, it might be appropriate to go back to the reports for the committees. We haven't had quite some time.
I agree, Paul.
The three committees, um, including in the transportation management has been very active. Coastal Resiliency has been extremely active. And the Waste Water Management Committee have been looking at different projects. And, um, I think we need to talk a little bit about that, I'd like to put that on the agenda.
Uh-huh. So that definitely is on the thirteen. I think we don't necessarily want to have anything but multifamily housing on the twenty-ninth. Tom?
Yes, I have one announcement. I would like to announce that Michaela Shoemaker, our community development planner, recently completed her master's degree in public policy and administration at Rutgers, the University of New Jersey. Excellent work by Michaela. With that degree in hand, she can be my boss, and you guys can get something done. Uh, so congratulations to Michaela, nicely done. Uh, I appreciate the fact that it's a lot of work, uh, trying to get that stuff done with a career. And so good for her and good for the town.
Congratulations, Michaela.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you very much, everyone.
Pat, Pat, I just wanted to ask, when are we going to finalize our design review? Document? It seems to have wandered off of our agenda.
Well, it has and it hasn't, that's why we're having the third meeting. I, cause we weren't doing things, and that's why we decided to have another meeting in the month, because they just weren't getting done. Tom?
And hopefully in October, we'll have an announcement about staffing in the planning office as well.
And that should allow us to accomplish more as well. Okay?
I was just seeking an update, really, maybe on, maybe not next week, but the week following, an update on when we could expect to be working on the design review and maybe hearing back from union station on our form-based management. We don't, you know, we don't hear anything for a long period, and I just would like an update.
Okay. Can we do an update on the thirteenth, Tom, as to scheduling for these special projects?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, who's, somebody? Somebody's phone is ringing. Anyway, um, no general correspondence, I gather, it was not in my packet, okay? And future agenda items, we've just gone over to that, over that. Next meeting, September twenty-ninth, and remember, it's going to be at six o'clock, so put that in your calendars. And then we do not have the October thirteenth meeting located in here, but the, there's one for October twenty-seventh and twenty-twenty charter changes. Tom, that is in regard to what? Okay.
That is in regard to, uh, the charter committee's recommendations for town meeting.
Okay, but that's not a huge, long discussion. So that's just something that needs to be brought up, making everybody aware of that, okay? Is there anything else? Then, this meeting is adjourned at eight oh eight PM. Good night, everybody, and thank you.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Good night.